Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Lompoc City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Hohndahl.
Here.
Mayor Potam Ashley Costa.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here.
And now we'll have our invocation from Pastor Ruben Tamaio of Victory Outreach of Lompoc. If you'd rise, please.
Let's pray. Father, we come before your throne of grace and ask you, Father, for your miraculous hand, God, to be extended upon these people that are going to be making big decisions for this city. Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom, God, wisdom that would help us, God, in building this city for your glory and your honor. And, God, I pray, God, that, God, the outcome of this meeting would be very beneficial for our city, that we would continue to grow and see jobs come in and see people come and rejoice in our city and people would be excited of the new things that are taking place in our city. Father, we thank you, Lord God, for your mighty hand upon each and every soul here tonight that's going to be making decisions, for I know that you will give them the wisdom and the knowledge, Father. We thank you, God. We thank you, and we all said in Jesus. Amen. Praise the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll take a two-minute break until the presenter gets here, who is diligently running something off in the back. So, everybody breathe out and stand up. Shake hands with your neighbor. Okay. Good suggestion from the city attorney. Let's do appointments. Sit back down and stop making friends with your neighbor. Okay. First, we have... We have appointments to the Human Services Commission, but I don't have it. Okay. I think that one might still be in my inbox. And we have... For the Human Services Commission, we have Councilmember Starbuck to make an appointment. Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm going to nominate Pam Wall to the Human Services Commission.
And for Councilmember Lingle, nomination.
First, I'll second Councilmember Starbuck's nomination.
I was going to take it as a package, but go ahead.
And I'm going to be nominating Paul Hill as my nominee to the Public Services Commission.
All right. Public Safety.
Human Services.
Human Services. Human Services. Are you going to cross second each other if we're going to take this separately?
For the Human Services Commission, yes, I'll second that motion.
We could create a new commission and start nominating people.
We just did.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so we'll have to take it separately. So, on the matter of Pam Wall's appointment to the Human Services Commission, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And on the nomination of Paul Hill to the Human Services Commission, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And they're already at work, so better yet. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking for it. Do we have one opening or two?
Two.
Okay, we have two applicants and two openings for the Library Board, Luel and Noels and Maria Aguniga. And I would accept a motion for those.
I move second to vote.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Public Safety Commission, that would be the addendum that was passed out for the meeting. And that would be my nominee, so I would nominate Victor Vega. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, well, he beat you to it. He didn't turn his microphone on. I don't know which one counts. Go ahead, Duane. Do your second.
Second.
And is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote, please? Didn't stick. Oh, sorry. Cancel me and start over. That would be bad. Okay, hit it again.
There you go.
Yeah. That time we got it. And that passes 5-0. And then, Councilmember Hohndahl?
I nominate Frank Campo, Public Safety Commission.
All right, and I'll second that. And is there any discussion on that? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Did I miss any? Okay, now we have an appointment of the council representative to the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, C3H. And is there a presentation on that from anyone?
Mary Lynn, I requested that this be agendized. Based on the committee's recommendation, I've been to one of their meetings and been in contact with multiple members, so I would like the nomination, if given it.
I'll move a nomination for Councilmember Costa.
I'll second.
You had your light on. You win this time. Okay. And is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And just for those of you who wonder why we go through this really quickly, most of these nominations are the council member's choice. This last one wasn't. So generally, we respect each other's requests and approve the person that the other council member wants. Try to help each other along. Okay. Now we will go back to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Teresa Gallivan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator. I'm here this evening with a presentation, an update on the Urban County Partnership. And as part of that, I'd like to share with you, give you an update on the current status of the Urban County Cooperative Agreement, the renewal commitment for the 2013 through 2015 program year that was made, the request to reconsider the commitment, the HUD, the feedback that we have received and the discussion that we have had with HUD, and the options available as we move forward. So the current agreement that we are in, we are presently in the final year of the 2010 through 2012 Urban County Partnership. And we are also part of the Home Consortium, which runs a concurrent term. The Urban County Partnership is what applies to CDBG. The Home Consortium is what applies to the Home. And again, those terms run concurrently. The program year, the federal program year runs from October 1st through September 30th. So it is a little confusing since it's a little bit off of our fiscal year that we so often refer to. So the term of our current agreement ends on September 30th, 2013. Now, in June, council approved renewing the participation in the Urban County Partnership and the Home Consortium for the program years 2013 through 2015. And the terms of that agreement, again, reflect the program year of October through September, October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2016. Some other terms of this contract are, there is an automatic renewal clause, so unless we submit something with a request to exit, the term can automatically be renewed as presently written. Within the terms of the agreement, there's also a stipulation that the county or city cannot terminate or withdraw from this agreement while it is in effect. And also as part of this, the county must notify the city by a deadline specified in HUD's Urban County Qualification Notice of its right not to participate in the next successive three-year term. And the county did send us a notice, which, from there, we came to the council in June with the discussion on whether or not to renew. So that is part of the terms of the agreement we have, and they would do that again in the future. The parties also agreed to adopt any amendments prior to the three-year extension. And through this, I think the important thing to you, one of the important things to key in on is there is a qualification period, a notification period, a schedule by which we have the opportunity to reconsider before going into the three-year commitment. And that qualification schedule, HUD sends out the Urban County Qualification Notice that comes out approximately in March. And there is a timeline and a schedule that the county must notify us as a participating partner of our opportunity to exit or renew. And once we've made a decision to do that, then that becomes an obligation or a contract. So the qualification period is the opportunity to make any changes. Now, since June, we have had some discussion and the request from council for an update on whether or not we can reconsider and what the options are. We also have had, the Human Services Commission has also had quite a bit of discussion about this topic, and they've done research about our agreements. And they submitted a letter to council recommending a plan for us to be, for the city of Lompoc to become an entitlement city again without sacrificing any continued CDBG funding. So that was something that was discussed at the Human Services Commission, and they were very concerned about, is that in the process of exiting or exiting early, that we not lose any CDBG funding in the process, that it would be a continuous process. So staff did research and looked at, on the Urban County qualification process. And in that notice, there is some information about special considerations, Section 8, that although it does not apply specifically to the situation we're in and where we would be requesting perhaps an early exit, it did somewhat indicate an opportunity to maybe negotiate a schedule or an amended cooperation agreement. So this was something that I spoke with HUD about and approached them with this consideration. And in talking to HUD, our representative did say that she would consult with her boss and discuss with her boss a waiver or a request to exit the consortium through a waiver, which would need a substantial reason to do so. So she, we were also, they shared with us that exiting early the consortium is a big decision and advised that we carefully consider such a decision because not only does it have an impact on the city of Lompoc, but the urban county and partners. And HUD also shared with us that there is a new team at the county that is working through this challenging time to develop a stronger program. So all of these things are things to consider carefully when having a discussion about whether or not to continue in the urban county partnership. So HUD did have that discussion about the waiver for exiting early. And then we received feedback indicating that after discussing it, that they would deny the request to exit early based on the regulations, and they did refer us to the HUD Regulations 24 CFR 570.307 D2. And I have the language directly from that regulation citation, that during the period of qualification, which is the qualification period and the term of the agreement, "No included unit of general local government may withdraw from nor be removed from the urban county for HUD's grant computation purposes." So that was the information that, the feedback that we had as a result of the dialogue. And looking forward, what the options are is that we can plan for the next qualification cycle to consider exiting the partnership and apply for entitlement city status. The next qualification cycle would be, period, again, would come out a year before the final program year term of the next three-year agreement. So in, we'd need to make a decision by June, approximately of 2015. HUD would probably send out its notice of the schedule in March of 2015. And we would bring back discussion to council well before that so that there could be current information and data shared about that decision and a discussion with the relevant information at that time. So that is what we have learned, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I guess I'll go first. I think the concern among many was that some of the county's current audit issues could impact the funding coming to the city of Lompoc through the various HUD programs managed by the consortium. Did you have a discussion with regard to that?
As far as the waiver, if there is a substantial impact, is, not if, but if there is a substantial impact and concern or reasonable harm, then that would be a cause for a request for a waiver. But at this time, the, and this is, we're talking about urban county and not consortium. But, you know, so far, we have not had a discussion about CDBG and considerable harm as a reason.
HUD hasn't indicated that any of the county's audit issues would come to the point that would cause a loss of funding to us or another member of the consortium?
If the, if there was considerable harm, then we could look at the waiver.
But at this point, that's not viewed as a likely possibility?
There is.
I guess I'm asking the question a different way. Is HUD saying basically, yeah, the county's got some audit issues, they're working their way through it, and we don't think that your funding's going to be impacted? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
They didn't.
Are they going to take money away from us?
They, that has not been a topic that has come up.
So is that a good, does that mean they're not likely to, or they're just not talking about it?
No, that has not been, the audit has been primarily, and the things that they're working through are with Home Consortium.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Starbuck?
Just one of the questions. I know you've put a tremendous amount of time in this, and this was kind of an issue I brought up, was since we belong to this consortium, it's obvious that we can't apply for state funds, grants, et cetera, or the nonprofits that we try and help with this. This is a true statement, right?
As a partner in the urban county, there are certain things that we don't apply for. However, the county receives that funding, and nonprofits are able to apply for those funds through the county. So I think.
Have we done that? That's, I guess, the big question. Do our nonprofits that apply, do they apply through that now? Has the county done any outreach on this with these groups, or?
My understanding is there are some organizations within the community that have, for example, Emergency Solutions Grant, but they could speak to that more clearly, but my understanding is there have been.
See, this is where I get concerned with this consortium, is the fact that all of a sudden, this is our local nonprofits, our people in the valley here, and then they have to get, deal with the county, and we know what a nightmare that can become. And so I'm just wondering how they're being represented down there, or how they're tracked through the system. Do they have to go through the consortium in Santa Barbara, go to the Board of Supervisors and ask them? Do they go to the CDBG coordinator down there and ask them, how do they apply? How is this tracked for them? Or we certainly don't do it because it's not, we're not able to now.
Right. The granting process would, there would be a process for any of the other grants that the county would administer. That would be similar to a Notice of Funding Availability and letting folks know that they can apply during that. And it goes through the same process as we would if we put out a Notice of Funding Availability for CDBG.
So I guess in the big scheme of things, we're hands tied and can't do anything until 15th and make a decision at that point?
They have indicated that, they have referred us to the regulations that say we cannot terminate or withdraw during the term, and the term has been renewed.
Okay. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I guess my frustration comes when we renewed. I remember that meeting because we were very perplexed as to what the correct decision was. And I'm glad that you're providing us some additional information because I feel like that decision was made without all things considered and without all proper information. So it is frustrating at this point. My one question is, I'm under the impression that this, there's, cities can enter into the consortium during that period, but you cannot exit then? Because I've been hearing there is, the city of Guadalupe is entering into the consortium as well. Is that correct?
I understand that they have expressed interest. I don't know how far along that process is. However, I did mention that, I did have a discussion about that with HUD, and the difference there being that that is not an impact, that joining is not an impact that could potentially harm the urban county or partners.
I guess it depends on how you define harm, right? Because if somebody is joining, then the pot gets smaller for everyone, so technically you're receiving less?
Not necessarily, although there was not a forecast for what the impact of Guadalupe joining, that, you know, that was not provided. But it could also be the opposite. It could mean that based on need, allocation could go up. But again, there was not a prediction or a forecast given either way.
Can you keep an eye on that and let us know if Guadalupe does join, when that happens, and what the, what the effect is?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, now we know the, all the details. And City Administrator Status Reports.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Community Viewers. While I have no status updates to report on tonight, I would take this opportunity to cover several upcoming council agenda items scheduled for February. First, the regular council meeting of February 5th will include a presentation by the Lompoc Valley Parks and Pool Foundation, Fallen Warriors Memorial Committee, presenting on the veterans' memorial project proposed for Betty Park. The same agenda will include a staff report regarding the transit transfer center and feasibility of the site location. Staff will also present to council on that meeting of the 5th, a draft memorandum of understanding with the Lompoc Valley Parks and Pool Foundation River Bend Bike Park Committee for development of the BMX Bike Park at River Bend Park. And staff will also provide council an update on the proposed master plan pro forma and terms and conditions of the exclusive negotiating agreement with Environmental Education Group related to the proposed California Space Enterprise Center. On February 12th, council will hold a one-day budget goal-setting workshop to kick off the February 2011, I mean, 2013-15 biennial budget process. And at this workshop, council will hear the state of the city finances presented by Management Services Director Brad Wilke, as well as hear department budget requests from each city department head. This budget workshop will provide council an opportunity to express budget goals with staff. And the upcoming regular council agenda of February 19th includes a presentation from the Economic Development Committee on their annual achievements, and a presentation from Police Chief Ralston on the operation of surveillance equipment, and staff's presentation of the draft city policy for financial reporting. And monitoring of nonprofit organizations will also be presented that evening. So council, you have a busy schedule and very, several important agenda matters for February for your consideration. And, Mr. Mayor, I have no other items to report or announce tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I would like the council to, due to the really heavy agenda on the 5th, February 5th, I'd like the council to consider starting one hour earlier, starting at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. Otherwise, we won't be out here till about 2:00, 2:00 in the morning. So I'd like, actually, I would need two other people to agree with me that, starting at 6:00.
Let's ask the city administrator how that works for her first. She's got to make the wheels roll.
Mr. Mayor and council, that will work. I just want to remind you that you do have a closed session scheduled. So if the regular scheduled council meeting starts at 6:00, then we'll begin the closed session for 5:00.
I get it, everybody?
That works for your schedule.
That's the 5th we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Got five heads nodding up and down, so be it.
That's what we'll schedule. Thank you.
Councilmember Hohndahl?
My question is, if I remember everything, the budget workshop starts at 8:00 in the morning?
12:00.
12:00, yeah.
The budget workshop on February 12th will commence at 8:30.
8:30, okay. I missed it by 30 minutes.
Better early than late.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else have a question with regard to that? And everybody keep your calendars handy because we'll be discussing some other dates in the next segment. Staff requests and announcements? Correspondence? The next item is a time certain for 7:00, so maybe what we could do is, we could do our council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Can we take that out of order, Joe, or does that have to be down at the end? The next item is, was noticed for 7:00 to about 10,000 postcard holders? Oh, it is. It's 6:30. So I don't think we can start that until 7:00 because that was the notice time on all those postcards, having made that mistake once before and having to redo the meeting.
Technically, legally, you could, but probably better not to.
Yeah, I think it's a bad idea. Could we instead take council requests and comments out of order? Okay, let's do that. We'll get that done, and we'll have one less thing to do. We'll start from the left since the light is on.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I, as I reported at the previous meeting, I will report it again. I was in Sacramento last week and the week prior, the first for the League of California Cities Policy Committee meetings, of which I am on the Taxation and Revenue Committee and also the Community Services Policy Committee. And the following week, I was in Sacramento with Councilmember Lingle for the NCPA Strategic Issues Conference. And then beyond that, I wanted to request, and our police chief is here as well, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we are getting together with a few folks, we've had a meeting so far, to bring in a Lompoc Criterion Race. The gentleman who coordinated us actually couldn't make it this evening, but he was the one who coordinated the race in Bulton last year. That was wildly successful. So now he is attempting to do a two-day event, the Saturday race being in Bulton, the Sunday race being in Lompoc, and packaging it as a weekend race for these folks. They have multiple races on both days. It's coming up pretty quickly. I believe the scheduled date is somewhere in June, June 30th. And so we want to get this on the agenda as soon as possible. What we were thinking, and I talked to the city administrator about this, is if he could potentially come give a short, very brief presentation at the beginning of the meeting on the 5th, and then if we give him the nods that we want to go forward, then we'll continue with our subcommittee and work with the city administrator to get that agendized in time for us to consider whether we want to have the event and incur the cost. Now, I will say, just to give you a quick update, the cost is very minimal. We're not talking about Amgen. I think Bulton spent $10,000 last year, and half of that was in kind with staff time. So if you can imagine, I think it's something... So if you can imagine, I think it's something that's a huge economic driver, and it's something I think we should consider. So I would hope that I could get the support of putting this on the agenda for the very beginning of February 5th. As I mentioned, the gentleman will just come and bring a short, very short presentation about the Lompoc Criterion Race.
Could you, because you and I have talked about it, could you talk about the economic impact, the number of people that came to Buellton?
Yeah, so actually...
Actually, it came here too, for the matter.
Right. The feedback we got was, it was so well-attended last year in Buellton that we got the spillover in our hotel rooms. And actually, a lot of folks prefer to stay in Lompoc as opposed to Buellton because our room rate is cheaper per night. So, you know, with that thought in mind, I think what we will do is really fill up some rooms for an entire weekend. You know, we have a lot of people on board interested in helping out, including the Village Dirtbags, which is a bike group. I know Healthy Lompoc Coalition, and, you know, their bike rodeo, the Lompoc Police Department, Chamber as well. So, you know, we can make it a really big event and get our bang for our buck, at least in TOT that day.
And I think the other thing that they talked about was that a lot of people who now would come for one overnight, if it was a two-day event, they would, they would stay for two nights or perhaps even three if they were going to take a long weekend and tour the area.
Yeah, and we were actually talking about, since, you know, the sponsor in Buellton is the Firestone Walker, we were thinking about how can we bring in the wine industry? So there's like sort of the beer version on Saturday, the wine version on Sunday, and try to help out our local wine industry as well.
Well, I think it's a great idea. How about the rest of you folks? Okay, there you go.
Great.
You got a fiber.
Can you re-agendize that?
Yeah. Okay, and could you just kind of, since we've got time to burn, literally, could you talk about what the policy committee was talking about and what you guys were doing, maybe?
Well, community services, well, the first meeting is usually a lot of getting to know the process and meeting one another. We, in the community services, we talked about the, well, first and foremost, let me backtrack. There's a meeting that gives an update of the federal budget, the state budget, you know, what's going on in regards to the impact to cities and local control. So we get a lot of information that way. The biggest thing was, the governor's budget was released, so we got to review what he's released, and the Legislative Analyst Office releases their analysis of that budget. And so we went over some of that first and foremost. And then in the community services meeting, they're still pushing the idea of HEAL, which we have been successful with, but it's great because we can help other cities do that as well. And then also, they can help us with the implementation. So that was exciting to hear. We also heard from two folks coming from the federal government, one about the Federal Arts Commission, and one that was tied into the Healthy Lompoc Coalition. And I believe Michelle Obama is spearheading an effort. I don't recall the name, but they provided some resources if you wanted your city to continue down that road as well. So that was good. Revenue and taxation was interesting. I really feel like I might have to get Brad to come with me sometimes because, if he has the time, because they get, you know, they get very detailed in the way that they discuss certain things. And so I'm kind of just getting my feet wet with that policy committee. And again, we, we talked a lot about Governor Brown's budget, which I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at. A lot of it was about anticipated revenues, and actually, about a 4% increase in spending. And none of it really had to do with cuts in spending. So as cities, we were a little frustrated, and we sort of talked through that and talked about, the biggest, most important thing is going to be figuring out how to finance community development projects in the future because we no longer have redevelopment agencies. So they're currently working with some legislators and trying to come up with some legislation that will allow cities, whether it's through JPAs or whether it's through county organizations, figuring out a way to finance economic development projects. And so, you know, we're looking forward to that this year, and hopefully, will provide the cities a resource now that we no longer have redevelopment. That's overall, that was about it.
Okay, Duane?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was up in Sacramento that second week at the mayor and county, new mayor and county council training center. I've been there before, but this is one of the best I've been to. It's the first time in the years they've ever had that they were completely sold out. They didn't have any room, and somewhere left, left out of the process. And they had some real good information that came before us, and we have books with us if somebody wants them. It gave a lot of good training of what's going on, how to handle the meeting, went right down, everything you want to talk about, how to run meetings, how to work with the people, what to be doing out there in the future. And I was very pleased to see the quality that it came up with. But I think the big thing is that every city, I think it's 442 cities, and the one other plus is because you have a chance to talk to cities from all over. And I, of course, I always talk about our wine industry, but the other thing I brought up to several of them is about our police and fire training center out at Hancock, and they're excited. And because of that, I brought up to the mayor and to Laura that the idea, we need to have a booth at the conference in September, talking about all the things we've got coming down the road for Lompoc, and that, this is one of them. Because with that many cities, you're going to have those people looking at where the Center of Police and Fire for training and other things. There's one of the facilities in Northern California that's fairly new, that's completely shut down because they didn't have the money to run it. So Lompoc is in real good shape, looking in that area. So I think that's, we can do a lot of promoting of Lompoc, what's coming down the road and everything else. And so I think that's what I was pleased, because I talked about six to 10 people from different cities about that, and they're really excited. Some were firemen that knew what the facility was like, and oh, they just come unglued. So they're ready to come down here, and I think the idea of presentation at that conference may be a real plus. And we can sell more than that also. We always got to sell our wine.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I was fortunate, I attended the Lompoc Valley and Bloom Chamber of Commerce fundraiser, Hay Bales and Cocktails. I wanted to say, I thought it was a very successful event, and I looked at many improvements in the area with the money they raised there. One last thing I want to bring up is, city administrator, sometime, could we get a memo as a council? I am right now very unclear with our steel sculpture saga. And I think that the paper and the council and the beautification commission, and I'd kind of just maybe close the loop in March sometime if we could on this, where we are. Are they ours? Are they the hospitals? You know, some of the questions that a lot of us have.
I can put together a memo for you.
They're bobs. Yeah.
Councilmember Starbuck, last time we talked about those steel structures, as you call them now, you said they were art. You said they were art last time. Yeah. Okay, anyway. Thank you. Let's see, on February 14th, I attended, here in this council chamber, is a RDA Oversight Committee. On the 17th, I attended...
Why don't you recap that for the public?
Actually, it was about a 10-minute meeting. All we did was, we agreed, what did we agreed on, Brad? It was, we agreed on previously submitted information to the RDA. I mean, it was, it was a 10-minute meeting, it was a rereading of it. It was, it was nothing that was actually... Brad, what was that? That was a... Yeah, okay, it was a...
Due diligence.
Due diligence report, thank you, that we had, we had read once before, and all we had to do was sit in here and agree that we...
So you're trying to say it was the second reading?
Yeah, yeah. It was about a 10-minute meeting.
Maybe you could, since you're in the middle of that, you could also talk about the next step going forward that you guys are going to undertake?
What is the next step we're going to undertake? Yeah.
I think you're talking about the property management plan as probably your next step.
Well, we are, but I mean, you know, that's, yeah, it's too far off to even start talking about that.
Okay.
On the 17th, I attended a San Barbara County Area Government Meeting, and that was in, in San Barbara. On the 23rd and 24th, along with Councilmember Costa, I attended the NCPA meeting. That meeting is the only meeting that Costa City anything, they paid for my mileage to drive to Sacramento and back. The hotel rooms in the conference was paid for by NCPA. Let's see, at that meeting, there was a lot discussed, it was a two-day meeting. The, they always go over, the first day, there's a history day. They talk about, you know, what NCPA is, the history of NCPA, where it started and where it went. There are several updates on NCPA projects that we have ownership in, including the newest, our Lowdi Energy Center, which is a $300 million project, which is the most efficient and cleanest energy project in the state of, actually, in the state of California, definitely, possibly in the United States. Well, let's see, we went over budget updates, and we had several speakers, including two state senators. And most of the speakers were talking about the need for clean, affordable energy in California. We had a report which, actually, I found this the most interesting project because, I hope I don't offend anyone, but I've always been opposed to our spending of 60, 80 million dollars on this high-speed rail system going through the middle of California. Some people refer to it as the railroad tracks to nowhere. And that may have been the way it started off. So during this report, they have a new project manager on it. The high-speed rail will start in San Diego, go up into San Francisco. But the difference right now with this project, instead of just one straight line with one or two stops along the way, possibly in Bakersfield, Fresno, it's going to be connecting intercity hubs. So all of the hubs at the cities along the Interstate 5 will have an opportunity to load and unload their passengers onto this high-speed rail. The ridership should go from probably below cost, I mean, below profitability, to exceeding profitability, where they actually think that they'll be able to have a private vendor at a price, take over this project and get the state of California out of the burden of running it. I hope that happens. But it was a promising little project, or better presentation than what I've seen in the past. But the highlight of the trip, on the last night, we always have a wine tasting, a blind wine tasting. Councilmember Holmdol, I'm taking your thunder right now. But most of the cities in NCPA, they, coming from California, they have local wines. So each of the cities bring a couple bottles of our own wine. And in the past, we've won several first places with some of our local wines. We didn't do quite as well this time, but I'm proud to say that we did take a third place with our red wine. And we should have taken a first with our, with our white wine, but we were, because it's a blind tasting, they just put the bottles of wine in brown paper bags next to each other. And our wonderful, wonderful Chardonnay was placed next to a Muscat, a very, very sweet wine. So a person went from a very sweet Muscat to our delicate Chardonnay, and obviously, that probably wasn't the best thing to taste after that. But, but we did well. And I did also attend the Hay Bales and Cocktails, the fundraiser here in town, so. But the only event that the city had to pay any money for was my mileage to Sacramento and back.
Mr. Mayor, Bob, did anybody tell you at that meeting about the train that's going up San Joaquin Valley, about what the counties and the cities think about it up there? That they don't like it because they're taking their profit away? But also, what are we in the coastline going to get out of a train that goes up San Joaquin Valley we got to pay for?
Well, we are getting nothing out of that. We're helping to pay for it. That's what we're going to get out of it, so.
Obviously, we're nice guys. So I went with Councilmember Holmdol and the city administrator to the League of Cities. It was my second time there. The first time was consumed by a lot of issues that kept making me leave, so this time, I didn't have nearly as much time on the phone, and it was a lot better, and I think I picked up some valuable things. If you can, I think one of the interesting ones was, they have a skit at lunch of how a council meeting shouldn't be run. And maybe we can get the script and we'll do it here once? Oh my goodness. That's, I can't imagine ever having anyone do any of those things, but they were all taken from real life. And I did meet the new mayor of a city who remained nameless, who's one council member, and the mayor, the mayor announced that he was leaving his wife to hook up with this council member at one of their council meetings. So, you know, there's, there's some things out there that are just pretty exciting. Probably one of the most important takeaways...
Obviously, we're trying to kill some time.
Yeah. And we're working on it. I don't think we're going to get it done, though. Probably the most important takeaway from the first part of it was a discussion of what the state is likely to do for us or to us. And since we know they're never going to do anything for us, with the question was, what are they going to do to us? And it was interesting that the, just before we went, the city administrator and I attended a mayor's luncheon with Kachua Sajin was there, and he was describing how he viewed the future going forward in Sacramento. And when we got the report from the League of Cities, it was basically identical. And the outlook is, they have about a $1.5 billion shortage, which seems kind of huge. But if you put it in perspective, that's about 1.5% of the state budget, so to them, that's not much money. I guess it would be like us having a $140,000 shortfall. And that the discussion in Sacramento now is not so much about taking from the cities, it's more about resolving some of the damage that was done by redevelopment. The redevelopment takeaway, resolving some more issues with regard to pension, and there's even a little move up there now to look at subsequent revisions to help projects go forward in a more expedient way. So the news from Sacramento was really good because they're not going to help us anymore, at least for the near term. And then I also had conversations with a number of city folks from different places, talking about things that are successful in their cities, and they'll be bringing some of those pieces of good news to us. And we didn't burn up enough time. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about before we take a break? Joe, you want to report on something? Oh. All right, we'll, we'll take a break to, a couple minutes to 7:00, and we'll come in and sit down, and we'll start at 7:00. And for those of you who just got here, we're doing that because there's a time certain, the postcards were mailed out, said we'd begin at 7:00. But we did find that we have one written communication. Ta-da-ta.
Mayor, we received a written communication from Ray Fernandez, and I have copies for
Susan Gallagher, coming in front of you tonight is from the Board of Realtors. I wanted to pass out an update of what the market's doing here to let you know what we have real estate-wise in town. Currently, 63 homes on the market, and I've given you each a copy, and it breaks it down on the side as far as price range, as if a person was looking for a home, their options. And some of them are only two or three houses to look at. Most houses are receiving eight to 10 offers, and by the time a buyer would secure one, you're probably written eight to 10, maybe 12 offers where they may secure a home. So I wanted to let you be aware of that, what our housing is doing in town, and there's plenty of graphs in there. And if you have any other questions, you can give me a call.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance? Going, going, gone. Okay. And I'm sure that all of you in the audience went online and read the light document reading for this evening's meeting, right? Everybody covered that? Okay, good, we're all up to speed on that. And now we'll move to our presentation. Lucille?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. The topic before us this evening is Lompoc City Council holding a public hearing to receive a status update and to discuss and consider the environmental impact report, number ER 090, I'm sorry, yeah, 901, the final environmental impact report prepared by Rincon Consultants for the City of Lompoc Comprehensive General Plan Update.
I made a mistake. I started off, and we didn't have opening oral communications because I've gotten derailed since we were out of order.
Sure.
So we were going to remember, remember what you said up to here, put a check mark, and then we'll go forward from there. So before we go any further, this is your opportunity to have oral communications with us on any subject, most likely the one we're here to talk about tonight. Is there anyone who would like to share something with us right now? Going once? Going twice? Come on? Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll get more than one bite of this apple. Come on down. And before we do that, let me just say one thing so that everybody understands. And before we do that, let me just say one thing so that everybody understands. This, the purpose of this meeting is a prior council instruction for the staff to come back to us with a timeline and a discussion of how to cut this project up into meaningful pieces so that we can go forward and finish the general plan update. And we will be discussing how to take on those pieces and what the pieces, in fact, will be. Sorry, Lucille.
Back. The, we're reviewing the final environmental impact report for the comprehensive general plan update, and it was circulated through the State Clearing House pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The study areas evaluated in the environmental impact report consist of areas within the current city limits and for potential expansion areas certified by the City Council on October 19th, 2010. The final addendum was prepared, and that provides additional greenhouse gas analy- analysis and policy language. The addendum was circulated through the State Clearing House as well, and it was available to the public and is available on our website for review. The actual general plan amendment is to adopt Phase One, the general plan elements, land use and circulation, and to amend the general plan land use element map. The housing element, which was part of Phase One, has, was adopted in 2010, and we are now getting ready to prepare a new housing element, which we will need to prepare according to the state requirements. Then there is a zone change included for council consideration to amend the City of Lompoc zoning map to achieve consistency with the general plan land use element map. The proposed zone changes are necessary to achieve consistency. However, the parcels for which the zoning is proposed to be changed are parcels where the current zoning is inconsistent with the existing general plan land use element map, and the zone change is a component of the general plan map. Additional processing direction, it's anticipated that the council will discuss and provide direction to staff regarding further processing of the general plan and amendments to the zoning ordinance. The recommendations for this evening's meeting are for the council to receive the update presented by the consultant and staff, to review the planning commission recommendations and the material presented in the staff report, hold a public hearing and take testimony, and consider and accept the tentative hearing schedule approved by the City Council on October 16th, 2012, or to provide alternative direction. And with that introduction, I would like to introduce Mr. Richard Dalton of Rincon Consultants, and he will present a PowerPoint presentation this evening.
Welcome, Richard.
Thank you, Lucille. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Richard Dalton. I am a principal with Rincon Consultants. We're the lead consultants for the preparation of the, the general plan update. I know some of you have seen pieces of this process several times before, and we also have some new faces here. I think the mayor put it pretty well. We're trying to really hope to achieve a path forward, a strategy for the next steps in the process, break that into meaningful pieces that, that gets us to concluding the process in a logical way. But before we do that, we really want to kind of take a step back and summarize how we got here, the steps that we've taken to date, and I'll try to do that fairly briefly here, but I'm happy to answer any questions as I, as I proceed. So in my presentation, I want to begin with a background on the general plan update. And as Lucille mentioned, the idea tonight is to receive the staff report, review the latest planning commission recommendations, and consider the following pieces. Number one, an addendum to the environmental impact report that addressed a few issues that arose late in the process following certification of the main environmental impact report for the land use element and circulation element and housing element updates. I'll get into that in a bit more detail in a moment. Consider the general plan amendment to adopt the land use and circulation elements and amend the land use element map, and then the zone changes to achieve consistency with the land use element map, to take public input, and then, again, ultimately, to provide direction to staff regarding a tentative hearing schedule, that, that path forward to complete the process. And we're also looking for your input tonight regarding, specifically regarding the EIR So again, by way of background, the 1997 general plan was the most recent comprehensive update of the general plan. Most of those elements are still the active elements of the general plan that are used on a daily basis. There have been updates to the housing element as required by state law through this process. As described in this note, when the City Council adopted the comprehensive general plan back in 1997, it was acknowledged at that point that there would be an interim period after the adoption of the general plan but before adoption of the zoning ordinance and zoning map for consistency. And in the meantime, development was to occur in accordance with the adopted land use designations and the equivalent zoning. One quick note about general plans to keep in mind as we proceed, and that's that they are general, and they are somewhat flexible, and allow for modification as needs arise and as conditions change. So state law allows the city to amend the general plan up to four times in a year, and for the city, historically, since its adoption in 97, the general plan's been amended 26 times. Two of those times were to, for the original adoption and then consolidation of the general plan elements. There are two amendments for the various required housing element updates, 18 amendments that were specific to projects, and four that dealt with policy issues. So as a reminder, as we initiated the update process of what we're calling the 2030 general plan update, we split it into two phases, and that was to comply with state legislative mandates that required that the housing element be adopted in a certain timeframe, because we needed to address that in the EIR, and because housing issues very directly relate to land use issues and circulation issues, we dealt with those three elements in this first phase of the general plan update. So the land use element, which is the community's vision for development through the full planning horizon, so it's the, really the blueprint for the future growth of the city, and it looks at the location and intensity and character of future land uses in the city. The circulation element that outlines the transportation network that supports the development that's specified in the land use element. And then the housing element, which implements the different types of single-family, multifamily, and mixed-use developments envisioned by the land use element. And that element was adopted by City Council and certified by HCD. Once we complete Phase One of the process, we'll move on to Phase Two, which includes the other mandatory elements of a general plan per state law, as well as other elements. So it's the conservation element, open space element, noise element, safety element, parks and rec, and urban design. So this just summarizes the schedule that, and some of the history of Phase One of the general plan update. We initiated the process back in December of 2007, had a lengthy public outreach phase with a number of public workshops. We developed land, the land use, circulation, housing element policies, and the land use plan based on that public input throughout 2009. The environmental impact report examined the environmental effects of those land use changes and circulation changes and housing changes, and that was prepared in 2009, 2010. The planning commission had hearings on the elements in the EIR in June and August of 2010, and then City Council followed up with their hearings based on the planning commission recommendations in September and October of 2010. City Council then returned consideration of the land use and circulation elements to the planning commission after a series of hearings and several discussions in April of 2011. And then the planning commission had their own series of additional hearings and recommended certification of the EIR addendum, adoption of the zoning map changes, and adoption of the land use and circulation elements in October of 2011. So again, just to summarize, the previous City Council decisions and direction to date on Phase One of the general plan update. Again, the general plan final EIR was certified for the purposes of adopting that housing element update. The land use and circulation element text and map were, consideration of that was considered to a date uncertain. I returned review of the general plan Phase One to the planning commission and authorized the preparation of that EIR addendum and additional greenhouse gas analysis that's part of that addendum. So I want to take a moment to focus on the general plan update EIR because we are looking for specific direction regarding certification of the addendum and its adequacy tonight. The general plan update EIR, EIR was certified in October of 2010. A general plan EIR is a programmatic EIR, is distinguished from a project EIR. It's a big-picture conceptual evaluation of the impacts of full general plan build-outs. It's looking at citywide impacts and citywide growth and development. And it's intended to be a base tier for future environmental evaluations to, we say tier off of, to focus and streamline future environmental review for individual projects in the city. Through the process, based on some public comment that we received, and really just the changing nature of, and state of practice with regard to evaluation of greenhouse gas emissions and analysis and changing policy at the state level, we realized we needed to add some additional analysis to the EIR to make it consistent with, with the state of the art. And that was done in this EIR addendum I've referenced. The EIR addendum also evaluated what at the time was planning commission direction to, or recommendations to change general plan policy language to be advisory rather than mandatory on a wholesale basis, so that all of the policies in the general plan would be simply advisory and not directly enforceable. That created some potential problems with the SEQA document, the EIR, because we had stated that the policies would be mitigative, they would help reduce impacts, and if you change it to advisory, it called into question whether those would actually be enforceable measures. In October of 2011, the planning commission adopted a resolution recommending that the City Council certify the EIR addendum. So just real quickly into the, a little bit into the technical side of things on the greenhouse gas emissions analysis. Again, it was intended to respond to current state and air pollution control district guidance and analytical standards, and we provided a much more detailed analysis of the issue where we revised the citywide greenhouse gas baseline emissions inventory. We backcasted that to 1990. We did that because state law requires cities and other entities to attempt to reduce their projected greenhouse gas emissions levels in the year 2020 back to 1990 levels. We wanted to see what that baseline looked like. We revised the citywide emissions forecast for full build-out, updated the thresholds of significance, estimated reductions that would happen from state and federal programs that are already in place, regardless of what the city did in the general plan, and then updated the impact and mitigation discussions based on that. One of the major changes was in the thresholds that we used, and in recent years, the air pollution control districts in the state have endorsed a, kind of a different way of looking at this. Rather than punishing cities that accept greater than their share of population growth and simply saying, well, now you're going to have a lot more greenhouse gas emissions, and so that's your problem, instead, looking at an efficiency threshold, which looks at an averaging of what per person or per employee within the city, what level of greenhouse gas emissions would be generated. And so we looked at that threshold, looked at existing emissions within the city that was below the threshold, looked at build-out, actually goes down compared to existing conditions for a couple of reasons. One, there's a focus in the general plan on infill development, which reduces average trip distances, and two, and probably an even larger factor, new development tends to be a lot more energy efficient than previous existing development. The proposed 2030 general plan was found to, of course, increase total emissions because there's more growth in the city, but on an average basis, per person, emissions would And already kind of touched on this, but we did look in detail on a, on a policy-by-policy basis where they were cited in the EIR. If we were to change the policies to should rather than shall and not have them be enforceable, would there be any additional impacts that we did not disclose for public review? And we concluded that that, that really didn't happen for several reasons. There was future compatibility due to the organization of land uses in the land use element map itself. So even though a policy may say the city should encourage infill development rather than shall, the fact was, the map showed it, demonstrated that the land use pattern would be infill-oriented, and so it's already kind of taken care of from an impact perspective. There are other policies from other adopted elements, or zoning ordinance requirements, or state requirements, or other mitigation measures. There are a number of other factors that were in play that we were able to conclude would effectively address all of the impacts that were identified in, in the EIR. So the EIR addendum, where the city's required to file findings of fact regarding the impacts that were identified in the EIR, and a statement of overriding considerations, which is a statement that acknowledges that there are some unavoidable environmental consequences of the action, but that there are other technical, social, economic, or other factors that outweigh those adverse impacts. So that conclusion needs to be made when certifying the EIR. When the planning commission reviewed the general plan update, they did not make a recommendation regarding two of the four potential expansion areas that are being considered. And as a consequence, and you'll see in your staff report packet, staff has provided four different sets of possible findings, depending on which expansion areas move forward. So there's a set for if both of those two in question move forward, if neither move forward, or if one or the other, and that's why there's four different sets of findings. You only need one of them ultimately, once a conclusion is reached regarding the expansion areas. So, note on the expansion areas, there, as I mentioned, there are four. Considered in the general plan, final environmental impact report, the decision on including or excluding any of the expansion areas is subject to City Council's discretion and approval. And the inclusion of an expansion area in the urban limit line indicates that the city is willing to consider, intends to consider development in the area. So just to be clear on, on terms, the urban limit line is the city's adopted line for future urban growth and, and expansion. It's often confused with the sphere of influence, which is a line established by the local agency formation commission through a negotiation between the city and county or two adjacent cities, and requires an additional step, an additional approval process. So until an application for annexation by property owners is received, no further action would be taken by the city. So the next step, if you wanted to consider future development in an expansion area, would be to move the urban limit line out. Then if there was a development proposal or a specific plan that a property owner wanted to proceed with, they would return to the city with an application for that. And then that annexation process involves environmental review, public hearings prior to any land use entitlement being granted by the city. So there's a whole separate process that would need to take place. And just real briefly, just wanted to quickly point out, for those that aren't familiar, the four expansion areas that are kind of on, on the table for consideration have been discussed quite a bit throughout the process. There's the, the Bailey Avenue area, this is Bailey Avenue on the, the western edge of town, about 270 acres with, actually several different land uses have been discussed over, over the years on, on that area, mostly residential. And we have the River area on the eastern edge of town, and the San Andres River passes through the middle, River Park passes through the middle. It actually extends all the way up to the drive-in site and down to 246. There's the Migalito Canyon area, it's a large area of about 600 acres that was envisioned for rural density residential uses. Planning commission recommended not to include that area. And then there's this 10-acre Y parcel considered for residential use, and that's actually the subject of a separate application that's currently in- And that's actually the subject of a separate application that's currently in process. And there's an EIR currently in process for that project being considered in parallel with this process. Some of these other areas that you see internal, that's the H Street infill corridor, several policies in the land use element to encourage infill development and coordinated public improvements in that area. And there's a separate overlay district here. And here is the Ocean Avenue overlay. That deals with providing additional architectural guidelines to ensure high-quality development on that corridor. Just to briefly summarize some of the planning commission's recommendations in a little more detail, the land use element map changes that were recommended were to include that H Street corridor infill overlay and Ocean Avenue corridor overlay and several changes to resolve inconsistencies between the land use element map and zoning map. And the other text changes recommended by the planning commission, several revisions for consistency with the expansion area recommendations. So a number of policies are set up to match with whatever expansion areas go forward. So for example, you would need to create that rural density residential land use category if the Miguelito Canyon expansion area were to move forward. If it doesn't move forward, you no longer need that category because it doesn't apply anywhere else in the city. So there'd be text changes for consistency like that. There was a fair amount of changes, providing an additional policy emphasis on public health issues. And those, all those changes are noted in the staff report attachment of the land use element in track changes format and several other minor wording changes. For the planning commission's input and recommendations on the circulation element text, there was additional policy emphasis on multimodal transportation facilities, so expanded beyond just providing for motor vehicles. Expanded language regarding safe access routes to schools and additional policy language to ensure that trees and utility cabinets don't impair driver visibility. So we discussed the need for a path forward, and this is staff's proposal as far as a tentative schedule. Tonight, we're discussing, providing the status update and providing an initial EIR discussion. Ultimately, that final decision on the EIR addendum will come back at the end once you've reviewed all these various other pieces of the puzzle. And we're proposing to come back in late February, February 26th, and to take each one of the four expansion areas in turn with its own dedicated meeting so that we can really focus in on the issues for each area. So we'd look at the River expansion area on February 26th, the Y expansion area to the north on March 5th, the Miguelito Canyon expansion area to the south on March 19th, and then the Bailey Avenue expansion area on March 26th. Then we would come back and to discuss the zoning consistency issue on April 30th and on May 14th, bring back the land use and circulation element policy language so that we can dive into the specific policies of those elements. And then ultimately return toward the end of May with the ordinance and resolution to adopt the EIR addendum and the land use and circulation elements. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just one little correction for the public and the council. The March 5th and 19th, those are regular council meetings. And the discussion on those two items has always been fairly brief, though the Y parcel was council's previously approved. The beginning of that process and then the Miguelito one has not generated a great deal of discussion in the past. So those were coupled in a regular council meeting. And the River expansion area and the Bailey Avenue, which have generated a lot of discussion, were separate, as well as the review of the zoning consistency, which discusses the 200 and however many residential lots that are inconsistent between the general plan and the zoning map. And that's a question for Richard.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. In reading the report about the 1990 GHG emissions estimate, I see that it's 6.5 metric tons. So, and in here, you're saying that in fact, it looks like we're going to be going down to 6.4 with what's anticipated for the 2030 general plan. But my question is, is because we're still unsure what the 2030 general plan is going to look like, and that's why we have all these decisions before us, is that anticipating the most potential GHG emissions?
I think it is. I mean, what that would come down to is the analysis looks at reasonable worst case for emissions, meaning all four expansion areas in. So it's trying to cover that outer envelope of possibilities. But if other land use changes were brought forward in this discussion, you know, it's a possibility that we need to go look at that again.
Right. So my concern would be is you have not only four expansion areas, but then you're looking at residential densities between the, you know, the R, the big issue being R3, R2. And so if you have a higher residential density along with four expansion areas, that could affect it? Or did you include that as well?
That would have been included as well. So, but if something new were to come up that wasn't discussed before, and that's why we're going to, would propose to bring it back at the very end for final consideration, just kind of looking for an endorsement of the general conclusions or approach of the addendum tonight.
Thank you.
Next. And I guess the one thing that, this is something new you may not even know about. We're putting in a CNG fueling station, so we hope to reduce our emissions yet some more.
Okay, good. Yeah, that would do it.
More positive, yeah. And that looks like it'll be in place by late March.
Very good.
So, good things. Maybe we stop at this point and have just a moment for public comments, see if anybody has anything they want to share with us on this subject. Okay? Anybody have any input on this piece of the pie? We'll have some more chances later, so this is not your only chance.
Good evening, Mayor Lynn, fellow council members. My name is Ron Fink. I live in the city of Lompoc. I've been a longstanding member of the planning commission, but I'm here to speak for myself this evening. As you've seen, we've, the planning commission has seen this many times already. We spent hours and hours and hours in excruciating detail discussing this. What we've sent forward to you is the best technical input that the staff has provided to us and we have discussed, and we've sent it forward to you. The issue's been before you before, and you sent it back, and we talked about it some more. So I would urge you this time to act at your level. In 1997, when council member Home doll was on the council, there was a substantial change made to the recommendations of the planning commission and an ad hoc committee that was present at the time. You can also do that. Many other bodies that adopt these things do the same thing. So this is your opportunity to put your spin on it. Investors and developers are looking to us to see what it is that we want to do with our city. And the longer we delay the process of telling them what we want us to want to do, the longer they're going to sit on their money. And they're not, they're not going to take a risk that you don't want to grow. If you don't want to grow, tell them you don't want to grow. If you do want to grow, tell them that too. Because it's important to the economic vitality of the city that people who have money to invest know what it is that we have as a vision. The next issue is the perfect plan. As you saw, the 1997 plan was amended many times over the years, just like buying a new computer. If you buy a new computer today, tomorrow, there's going to be a new whiz-bang device that looks better. So any plan we produce is going to be amended over time. So don't try to produce the perfect plan. Our view was technical, and your view is a different view of this plan. So we didn't have the latitude to do a lot of things that the council will have to do. So what I would urge you to do is to accept the schedule that the staff is recommending. I think it's a doable schedule. It allows the public plenty of opportunity to come forward and talk to specific elements of this plan. It has lots of moving parts. So you need to take the time to deliberate on each one. And I think that the schedule you've been provided is just fine to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We'll come back for a minute and have a council discussion. I think the schedule personally looks really good. I would like council to include in the one dealing with the inconsistencies, a philosophical discussion of the issues with regard to the industrial properties that were previously downzoned. Not that I want to take a bite of that apple here, but I want to have a discussion about and give the staff some direction going forward and give property owners some certainty because we have people sitting with industrial buildings that are vacant that cannot be rented. And they need to, they need to have an understanding if they should tear them down or, you know, what this council's will is. And then I think you all know I'm interested in having some consolidation of commercial zones. And again, I don't want to work that into this process, but I think we need to have that philosophical discussion going forward because the planning commission has said, well, let's get this can down the road and then we can take that on. But I think the staff needs to understand in advance whether or not that the majority of us want to take that on. And I believe that that same meeting would be a good, a good time to discuss all three of those issues, which would be the meeting with regard to inconsistencies. And I'd be looking for some support from at least two more of you to add those, those things to that schedule. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. My concern with that is I feel like that's part of what's gotten us to this point two years down the line as opposed to having addressed this two years ago. What my preference would be is that we get through this process, May 28th, as soon as that's over. Because it won't be a perfect plan, we can then look into, you know, making our first of four that we can make, amendments that we can make. So I would prefer that we just stick to the schedule as it's set, get through this process, complete this that's needed to be completed, understanding that I do support the idea that needs to be discussed, just, I would say, after May 28th. Thank you.
I see what you're saying, and I'm not looking for us to solve the problem on that day. I'm simply looking for us to incorporate into our discussion, a dialogue of whether we want to go forward on those two issues or we want to leave them laying behind. I don't want to spend hours on it. I just want to take a moment and decide if those are two things that the council is interested in doing and give the staff some direction going forward.
What was the second one?
The first one would be the discussion of the industrial properties that were previously downzoned. And the second discussion would be a discussion of whether, in terms of the general plan, we would want to, in the future, consolidate some commercial zones because that would be the step that the planning commission would need to know before they started talking about zoning ordinances, which is the step after this. And if we don't give them some guidance, they could go down one road when we want them to go down another. Because the goal is, as soon as this is done, to resolve some zoning ordinance issues. And I want to give guidance on both those issues. Now, Councilmember Mingle.
I have a question for Ms. Brees. Ms. Brees, I'm also interested in looking at the downzoned industrial properties. If we go ahead with the schedule as proposed, at what point do we have an opportunity to look at these or look at and possibly readjust the downzoned industrial properties?
If the council wants to provide us with the direction to return discussion of the industrial changes that were made, that could come back as part of, we could look at it as far as Phase Two. We would have the opportunity, as the Phase Two elements come forward, to make some changes to the land use element at that time. It would be one of our, as Councilmember Costa said, it would be potentially one of our amendments to the general plan.
And approximately date, month of, when would, because this, this proposal goes out, or the plan goes out till, it's not there anymore?
This, right now, the schedule that we're looking at would go for the approval in May, the 28th of May, for the council to adopt the resolutions. We then would come forward in the summer and hold a, I think it's attachment number nine in your staff report, we would hold a joint meeting of the planning commission and the council to provide direction on Phase Two moving forward. Those are the additional elements, as Mr. Dalton referred to them. And we would then begin work on those, holding the public hearings on those additional elements.
Okay. And if we were to agree with the mayor tonight to look at them as part of the schedule there, where would, where would they fit in? Looking at the downzoned industrial properties?
Let me, I'm, I'm not trying to go to work on that project. All I want us to do is to have a philosophical discussion of whether we want the staff to work on that in the future.
Okay. So at what point, if you were to, if we were to work on it in the future, where would it, where would you work on it? Would it be in the schedule, the current schedule you're proposing, or would it be in Phase Two?
No, the current schedule, my understanding of the mayor's proposal is the current schedule would move forward as it is presented. However, on the 30th of April, there would be an additional philosophical discussion of the items that he identified.
Okay. So I think what I'm hearing is that this discussion will take place. There's no need for us to instruct you to have this discussion take place. Is that what I'm hearing?
Generally, the way that we would do it if you did not have the discussion, when we came to working on Phase Two, there would be the opportunity at that time for the council to provide us direction to make changes to the land use element. And that would be following, it would probably be July.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Real quick, well, see, I just, a quick question. So we would discuss zoning on April 30th, preparing to go into Phase Two in July then, is what, what that is then?
Well, the, the July, the April 30th discussion is going to be the discussion on the zoning changes that will make either the zoning map consistent with the general plan map or the general plan map consistent with the zoning map, whatever direction council wants to provide so that we have consistent maps adopted. The additional language, I believe that the mayor wants to talk about, would be a step that would be taken following adoption of this land use element. And that would be separate and would occur later in the process. It would be more in line with our Phase Two. Because we would have to do analysis of it, we've not looked at any of this in the EIR. So there, there will need to be some additional work done.
So basically, the soonest we would go through the Phase One zoning consistency proposal, then we would go ahead and get into this discussion in preparation for the Phase Two? I would support this, but I want to include spot zoning in it.
Now, Councilmember Home doll.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand, we'd go down the whole, whole list. But I think also on April 30th, when you're talking about review, zoning inconsistency, some of that will still come out from the audience. Somebody's going to ask those certain questions, but we're not going to do anything with that until July. I don't want anything that's going to stop the sequence that we're going now to get this done on, by May 28th. So anything other than that would be after that, I understand you're right.
The council can go either, either direction. If you choose to have the philosophical discussions as proposed by the mayor on that day, there would be no action taken on that to stop this process going forward. The discussion that will occur and the action that would be requested would be for you to consider the planning commission recommendation on the hearings that have been held, on the parcels that have been identified, and to make a decision or a determination. We have provided, in the staff report, there are options, and we will discuss that further on the 30th with you, to either change the zoning map, to change the general plan map, or to potentially create an overlay to resolve the issue of the land use on the south side. There's options available to the council, and we will ask you for your opinion and discuss that more with you on that evening, on the 30th.
Councilmember Costa.
Mayor Lynn, why do you not prefer having the industrial property downzoning issue and the consolidation of commercial zones? and the consolidation of commercial zones included in the workshop between the City Council and the Planning Commission that takes place in May?
I do, but we, they wouldn't, wouldn't have an instruction to include that because it's not something that we're actively involved in.
But is that not something that we gave approval of when we discussed it months ago?
No, we did not.
Because we received staff reports and we had council meetings specifically discussing it. So, my last assumption is that we're actually in the middle of the discussion. It just got put off as we went down this path instead.
That's not my understanding of where we are, and that's why I want these two issues to be in there, because they involve similar issues to the residential properties, except the impact has already occurred. And I'm not trying to get us to spend hours on it. All I want us to do is to address the subject and tell the staff, yes, we want you to investigate this, or no, we don't want you to investigate this.
And then it would come back to us.
In the phase, in Phase Two, and it would come back to us.
In Phase Two at that workshop.
This, this is simply be an opportunity for us to tell the staff how we want them to proceed with regard to these two issues and for that, and Councilmember Starbucks' issue also.
And so, Ms. Breeze, in your opinion, if the, if that conversation did take place on the 30th and we advised we wanted to continue discussion, the discussion with staff report would then take place at the workshop in May?
It would, it would be an identified issue for discussion in the land use element, and there may be other issues that come forward in the discussions of the adoption of the plan that would be identified, and we would bring back for that land use update. We, we understand that the plan is something that we can adopt, and there's been changes of, perhaps, in community thought since the time we first held the meetings in 2008. So, any additional language, any additional policies that the, that the council would like to see, that will be part of the discussion that comes up on the workshop. That's why we want to hold the workshop with the Planning Commission, so that everyone's clear in the direction that we're going forward in.
And the other side of this is, my goal in doing it this way is we don't slow down this process, but we provide some time certainty to those people who've been waiting patiently for a very long time. So, and I'd be looking for two more people to nod their head up and down for that.
Real quick, before you leave, see, when does the Old Town specific come into this now?
The Planning Commission held the first meeting, a public hearing, on the Old Town specific plan last week, the 23rd. And so, we are moving forward on review of the Old Town plan. We'll, we have a schedule of hearings set up. It's the second meeting of each month for the Planning Commission. They're working on that policy language, that they will then formulate a recommendation, and that will come forward to the council.
So, that's still part of the Phase One for the adoption of the general plan?
No, it's not, it's separate from the general plan.
It is separate.
Mm-hmm. It's running on a parallel course, but it's a separate document.
Okay. Back around. Still need two people to nod their heads up and down. No pressure.
Like I said, I'm willing to support it during the council workshop with the Planning Commission, and I would like to include spot zoning in that conversation.
Works for me. Bob?
I'm going to stick with the existing schedule. Dwayne? Okay. Ashley?
My apologies, I have one more question, Ms. Breeze. I thought, usually you have a microphone.
I know.
Sorry.
This is part of our new Heal Cities program. We're all going to walk back and forth a lot.
In, in the discussion at the workshop, will we also be, what are the other topics? Is it including like the sign ordinance and parking and everything like that, or those are completely separate elements that are being taken care of?
The sign ordinance is part of the zoning ordinance update, which will follow adoption of Phase Two. The parking is something that the Planning Commission has reviewed and held hearings on the parking ordinance, and they will be looking at a final recommendation on that next month, which will come forward to the council as an independent item. Parking is separate. What you will look at when we have the workshop in July is direction on the additional elements that were not part of the Phase One elements. The safety element, the park and rec element, the, just all of the additional elements that do not have, they all have an equal weight, but they don't have the policy language and the tie with the housing element, land use and circulation. Those three needed to be considered together because we were under a time constraint for the housing element. The other ones are more independent, though they, the circulation element does work with them. And if there's any amendments that we have to make to those elements, we will go back and make them as well.
So, my stance on it would be that we do discuss the industrial property downzoning, but the consolidation of commercial zones would have to wait until after the process is over. Thank you.
Okay, well, we got three, so we'll add those to that discussion from a philosophical discussion, not to be confused with anything we're going to do, impact moving forward with the Phase One. Okay, what's next? You guys in the corner have to decide. Okay, a five-minute break is next. Let's take a break. Okay, coming on back. And...you're up. Okay, you're driving the bus.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was a very wonderful hearing. It gave us quite a bit of input, and I just want to make sure that we're clear, that we are going to have a discussion of the industrial and the residential, and, I mean, the commercial, and that will happen at the 30th as opposed to at the workshop. Is that?
Yes, with, at the 30th was what we agreed to. On a philosophical discussion, not that it's going to be incorporated into Phase One, but just the discussion going forward toward Phase Two. Because you told me this morning we didn't want to do that because it would mess up Phase One, so we're not messing it up.
Call me.
Here, Dirk, here, Dirk.
I, I'm going to un-mess up myself. I was confused earlier with workshop dates, okay, with the May and what we have here on April. I want to support this, but I want to do it during the council, Planning Commission workshop. Then I said April 30th, which is the reviewing of Phase One, which I don't want to interfere with that. I know that our schedule here is off a little bit. Now, here I have May. What would the real day be for this joint workshop then?
I don't have a specific date yet. We would-
Probably not May, though, huh?
It will definitely not be May, because May is the month we are then going to adopt the ordinances of approval for the general plan. So, the joint workshop would fall back to July.
Because, I, I mean, personally, I see that the zoning consistency proposal needs to happen in the Phase One. The three items with the downzone industrial that consolidate the commercial zones, and the spot zoning then would be what we would want to discuss at the workshop, so as we don't distract from going on with Phase One here.
Okay, and the point is, if we want to discuss those at the workshop, we need to tell the staff to include that, and that's the purpose of doing it on April 30th, to tell them whether or not we want to include it in the July workshop.
So, then it would just be an addendum item that we would have on April 30th to say that we wish to discuss this at the workshop in July.
It's a, it's a philosophical discussion on whether those should be included in the July workshop.
Mayor Lynn, if I could, my apologies, is, this is sort of a chicken and egg thing in that it's hard for me to discuss philosophically without having the information from staff and having a staff report to discuss it philosophically. So, I would recommend that we decide now whether or not we want to include that at the workshop or not, based on the prior exposure we've had with the information and the meetings that we have had, which have been, what, have we had maybe two or three at this point to discuss those topics. That would be my input. I don't know if, if Dirk, that makes sense to you, or Bob, that makes sense to you, but that's how it would make sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, could we just go ahead and agree right now that we would discuss these items at that workshop in May, June, July, and have it there, and then we can just take care of our Phase One general plan on April 30th, so that this tracks right there?
Okay, let me ask you a question. Joe, with the way this is adjourned, could we have that discussion now?
Yes, we added a very broad category at the end that said you could do this.
Okay. Do we have anything else other than what we're, are we pretty well done, so that we have time to do that right now?
We are.
Yes! It's even better. Okay, let's have that discussion right now. I like that even better, because you know me, I want it right now. So, I'll lead off by simply saying that for what seemed to be good reasons at the time, the prior council changed the zoning on a number of industrial properties and made them residential for what were good reasons then, but are not particularly economically viable reasons now, and I believe we need to readdress that, because we really need industrial buildings so people can have jobs, and we have buildings sitting empty that no one can use. Councilmember Mingle.
And I agree with you on that, Mr. Mayor. My question is, Mr., Councilmember Starbucks also wanted to talk about spot zoning, so, Ms. Breeze, I need you to walk up here again.
Let's, let's do one at a time.
Well, no, I, I believe, I want to get a clarification that this is not going to be considered spot zoning then. If we put-
Okay.
Yeah. Because I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. We, some of these industrial buildings, I think that we've been unfair, so.
We would not bring a recommendation to you for spot zoning. We would bring back the, the industrial properties. I, I believe what you want to see is the industrial properties where a change was made, and that's what we would bring back to you. Then, the Planning Commission would hold hearings on that and bring a recommendation forth to the council, because we would have to amend the land use element.
But as part of that discussion, you could talk about whether or not changing these would be a spot zoning issue?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I'm good with that.
Everybody good with that?
With the industrial, yes.
Okay. Now, number two, for the same July workshop, would be, do you have a discussion of zoning consolidations within the general plan, which would then ultimately trigger a zoning consolidation within the zoning ordinance? Or could, maybe couldn't, I don't know. But just to have that discussion with regard to the general plan at that July workshop. I'm sorry. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. You're referencing the commercial consolidation.
Or some version thereof. Not a particular version, but a discussion of it.
Okay, I would argue that we do not go further with that at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Mingle.
Okay, I think you need to explain that one more time to me, because I did not get it as, looking at the commercial.
Okay. So, we currently have six commercial zones in Lompoc. Once upon a time, we had just one C2. Now, we have community convenience centers, we have commercial office, we have some C2, we have mixed use, we have PCD, and probably one more I forgot. And each of those zones has a different set of requirements, and as I talked about when I gave everybody the tour down Ocean Avenue, each of those zones has very specific buildings in them. So, you can have a business who finds this perfect building for their business, but it's not zoned correctly for that type of business. When the current zoning was created in 1980, whatever it was, there was a different diversity in commercial businesses. With the rise of the internet, many, many, many of those businesses simply no longer exist. Also, many of the, the types of products, we don't have a furrier or a haberdashery or many of those things. And to subdivide down so finely, where literally in a three-block section, you can have three different zones, makes it very difficult when you're trying to attract businesses. Oh, yeah, nope, sorry, you can't use that building, but if you go over here to this building, yeah, but that building isn't the building that fits my need, you know? Parking's not right, the size of the building's wrong, the rental amount's wrong. You know, the, those zones were created for good and prudent reasons back then, but in today's world, most of the businesses now are service businesses that may or may not sell goods, because the good sales have been taken over by very large merchandisers. You know, when that, when that ordinance was written, the largest merchandiser in Lompoc was Kmart. Now, obviously, Walmarts here and Home Depots here, what are termed in the world are category killers. So, they've taken out all of the merchants in that type of category, and instead, we have these service and small goods retailers, and they don't fit that mold very much, and it just, it just creates a nightmare when you're trying to put somebody in. I was talking to a gymnasium today, and we were talking about a particular building, and I said, "You know, there's not enough parking at that building for the use you're intending." "Oh, yeah." Then, the next building, "Well, the ceiling's too low." And the next building, and so on, and by the time we were done, there were four buildings in all of Lompoc that would work with, with the criteria that they had. And of those four buildings, two were in a location where it's going to require a conditional use permit. So, it's just a goal to, to look at this and see if we want to simplify it. And, you know, me, I'm, I'm for simple, but I just want to have that discussion, because that's the first step going forward. Councilmember Mingle.
Okay. When you described it that way a year or so ago, it made sense to me. It makes sense to me now. Where'd Lucille go?
[laughing]
Oh, I'm sorry, you're smart. Okay. You've been through this before, you've, you understand where the mayor's going, and to me, it does make sense, why we'd want to do this. Give me a reason why we wouldn't want to go with the different, looking at the different zones again.
The, it's certainly up to the council how they ultimately want to see this set out. We did have discussion with the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission's recommendation was to retain the existing zoning, because it does have, in certain areas, where you have smaller uses, neighborhood uses, those are different in the feel and the exposure to the neighborhood around it. Then, the general commercial, where you can have big box and larger type uses. So, it was felt by the commission, their recommendation was to retain our existing, and there wasn't any change recommended to come forward. We had, we can certainly look at it, if that's the council direction. Be happy to take it back.
And how, how do we, as a city, look at the situation that the mayor's talking about right now, where businesses are trying to come to town, yet they get frustrated with not being able to find a building that matches their need?
Generally, what we do have the ability to do is to work with someone, as the mayor indicated. We have a conditional use permit. If there's an existing building can't be used specifically for something in the zone, the applicant can come forward and go through the process and discuss with the Planning Commission how that use would be consistent in the neighborhood, in the area, and can have a conditional use permit applied to a building.
Okay. And how recently did the Planning Commission agree to leave the existing zones? Was it at their most recent?
Yes, the most recent recommendation that came forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I think that, although I understand the concern, I think where we differ is where we feel the solution may be. So, I'm not sure that simple is necessarily better, but that it's something that we can change, and it's something we can look at. But I don't think consolidation is necessarily the right answer. So, Ms. Breeze, Ms. Breeze may have a recommendation in regards to where this discussion could take place, perhaps at that workshop, but I would not like to limit it to consolidation of the commercial zones, as you originally presented, but essentially analyzing what the current issues are, and then have staff provide multiple solutions or potential solutions for the issues. That's what I would be looking at, as a, as a possible recommendation. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Homble?
Yeah, Lucille, question I do have, and I think you hit most of it, is that this would be at the July meeting we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking about something that can be done, and doesn't stop the general plan update. And the idea that there is changes, you know, several months ago, this council made a decision to go ahead and allow small businesses to open on the Old Lily Building, where they couldn't before, and there wasn't enough parking for what they had zoned there. So, there is these zonings all over town, and it went through the council real quick, one of the fastest thing in five or six years, I think. But, huh?
That was the office.
Office used, yeah, but it was changed. So, I think it's time to look at it and see in the, in the new way of life what's going on out there. And I think that if we have a discussion in July on it, then we can see if we want to do it. The main thing, as long as we don't stop the general plan update, that moves along. This is something that can be added to it in July, and that we don't want to talk about it till then, because that'll, we don't want anything to detract from it. Now, I, I could support it that way.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I was going to say basically the same thing. An example for me would be the commercial office anymore. You don't have file cabinets and, and a staff, you have an iPhone and a laptop, so the designation commercial office is one that I certainly want to look at in July.
Okay. I think we're all kind of saying the same thing in a different way, that it's time to look at it and decide what direction we want to go in with a, with a blank slate approach? With a blank slate approach? Okay, is there anything else anyone else would like to add? All right. Do you need any formal action from us this evening, other than, I think we should all, we should take a formal action to approve this schedule by vote?
To accept the tentative schedule?
And a second. Uh, and I think with regard to the schedule, it's probably not an issue. We're going to have public comment as soon as we get that done. Well, no, you know what? We'll take a run. Anybody want to talk to us before we approve this schedule, having now heard all this discussion? Nope, I think we answered every question. Okay, back to a motion. Dwayne, go ahead. Got to turn your mic on.
Move that we have the general plan update tentative schedule that's before us today.
Okay, and a second. One second. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0.
Ms. Breeze, my, my apologies, I have a question, is where will this be published? This is, will be just noticed as we regularly notice all meetings?
We do notice on the city website, we notice in the Long Poak record, we've noticed in the Friday Focus through the chamber. Where, as we get to the individual meetings, the Bailey Avenue, we have a specific list of people, property owners and interested parties, where we will do a sec, another notification to them. This schedule will be up and available, though, on our general plan page on the city website.
Okay, can we, I would ask the city administrator, please put this on the homepage as well as an entire schedule, not just meeting by meeting, please. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Well, we've covered everything, so, city attorney, is there anything left we need to do? Okay. In that case, the Long Poak City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on February... Oh, you know, I did it. See, you guys aren't watching me. Last chance. Anybody want to talk about something? Going once? Going twice? Sold. February 5th, 7, no, 6:00. There's a correction, it will be at 6:00.